You want to kick it off, question?
Sorry. Good evening, welcome to the planning question meeting for July 9, 2025. If anyone would like to address the planning question this evening during the public comment period for an item not on the agenda, we request that you fill out a green speaker card and turn it into staff prior. Sorry, addressing a public comment for an item that is on the agenda, fill out a green speaker card and turn it into staff prior to the agenda item coming up. This meeting is being recorded and doing is available via Zoom. Planning commission receives public comments through email submitted prior to the meeting, to staff or in-person public comment is not accepted digitally via Zoom. Staff, we can have a roll call.
Commissioner Harmon.
President.
Commissioner Biassari.
Here.
Commissioner Lethine.
Here.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is absent and Commissioner DeRazo is absent. We are innocent.
Commissioner Kuhn, would you care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure.
Please wave your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which has had on its nation under our government and to the liberty and justice of our country. At this time, people accept comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards for things not on the agenda?
I have no speaker cards.
All right. Here. Moving on to approval of minutes. Does anyone have any concerns with the minutes for the motion to approve minutes from our last meeting?
I motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And also, all right, we just do that by activation?
Yeah.
All in favor? Right, right, right. Any opposed? Which passes. Uh, moving right along, we have a public hearing considering adoption of a resolution, right, and then the city council amendment. And that city council amended transit quarters plans, zoning out municipal code. I assume you have a stat presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. As the slides come up, this is a presentation of amendments to the transit quarters plan to the zoning map of the city and to the zoning ordinance in the municipal code as well as to the Mills Park Development Agreement.
There's a little bit of a lag.
Okay. This is going to be a brief presentation because while there are a number of changes there are all considered relatively minor. There are the zoning map amendments which we have exhibits for that I will go to on the next slide. Those are tied also to the Mills Park Development Agreement, which I'll discuss on the next slide. Then there are amendments to the actual transit corridor plan. And then there are zoning ordinance amendments that are either cleanup, clarifications, corrections, or simplifications, or the implementation of housing element program. And H, which is specifically to remove the prohibition of residential on the ground floor in the downtown area. That was a specific request of the state during the housing element. Next slide. I'm sorry.
It just is delayed.
Yeah, so the zoning map amendments are really the the starting point to this package. On the left is the current zoning map. This backshot of the map shows El Camino Real running diagonally but up-down. And then you see the intersection at San Bruno Avenue. The much of the lands on the west side are in a dark blue color because it's in a planned development zoning district. There's also another planned development zoning district over on Sylvan. Very hard to see. It's a small site. These were sites that were entitled after the transit corridor plan was adopted in 2013, but before the transit corridor plan, mixed-use zoning was put into the zoning ordinance in 2021. So you'll see other lands along El Camino are in the TOD2 zone. That is a mixed-use zone. Whereas these other properties like the Mills Park Project, the medical building on San Bruno, the small site on Sylvan are all still in a planned development zone. The proposal is to rezone those lands to be in the corresponding mixed-use zoning district that align with what is in the transit corridor plan. This change from staff's perspective simplifies processes for property owners for potential tenants of commercial sites and also for the city in processing because the TOD, the mixed-use zones like TOD2 and the CBD for the Sylvan property are more standardized zones that apply to all the other lands in the area. So really, this is viewed as a cleanup so that when one individual looks for a commercial tenant space on El Camino and they find, yes, I'm allowed in TOD2, and they find a site in Mills Park, oh, that's currently PD. We have to now check a different list to see if you're allowed there. If we rezone them, then it's a lot easier for all partners. Also, as part of this, this, the transit corridor plan identified the two properties where the library, city hall, fire station, and public parking lot are on as this civic center zone. It is the only zoning district in the city that only has two parcels in it. There's really no reason it needs to be in a bone zone. There are long-term benefits to the city because the council is looking at the long-term status of all of its properties and what makes the most economic sense. So there's a benefit to changing the zone to match the rest of the boulevard. And so that is also part of the zoning package. There are a number of minor text amendments to the zoning, most of which staff considers to be either corrections or clarifications to many of which to the prior 2024 zoning ordinance package. There are also some clarifications and cleanups and what staff believes are simplifications to the commercial cannabis rules, which I think we will get to. We would recommend that section be voted on separately from everything else in this package. We do recommend that planning commission pass, adopt the resolution recommending the council adopt all of these changes. The process for that is suggested to be that for reasons that will be described right after I'm done, to if there is support for the changes, for the maker of the motion to move all of the changes except the cannabis rules be taken under one vote and the cannabis rules be taken under a separate vote. And with that, staff's available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from our mission? Our hands.
Mr. Chair, if Commissioner Lethine could describe the reasons why the separation in votes is being done.
Yes, thank you for thank you for commenting that. Yeah.
If you can move the mic just a little bit closer. Thank you.
Because I mean, there's a chief of police assigned, and I'd rather I've seen from the discussion of the cannabis and I'm just going to see the discussion and then I'll participate in the vote.
I had a couple of questions. Overall, I appreciate the simplification. It worked, you know, seems good. I just want to make it be the existing Mills Park proposal, which has been in limbo for a while, I guess, probably because of financing and, you know, things. That project itself, that is, I think, consistent with TOD2, basically, that it wouldn't, this really does not, it does not put it out of doesn't make any non-conforming use or something.
I'm not certain of that. It is certainly possible that the entitlement could still be constructed under the TOD2 zone. As in general, I believe the planned development zone is less accommodating, more more specific, more tailored than the TOD2 zone. The property owner has been in communication with staff. They do not plan on proceeding with that project. They are not ruling out proceeding with it with different projects under the TOD2 zoning. That's also why the development agreement is proposed to be terminated as part of these efforts. It is based on what I picked up from the owner, it is likely that new development proposals won't be an all-at-once type approach that it might be focused more on certain properties and certain sections. And it probably will not involve moving the street that front of the road.
The alignment, yeah.
Right.
I think I've asked before, we've looked at possibilities of potentially upsetting other areas like that my one sort of quibble with the way we've done the TOD zoning is some of the, some of our TOD zones, you know, the the measure that authorized the whole transit corridor plan gave us up to five stories throughout the transit corridors, by understanding we've only zoned some of them for four. And then if we're going back and modifying this, I wonder, you know, like, why not just go out to what we're allowed to do on all these? I think really the binding constraint in the east side of the transit corridor is the FAA anyway. So it's not like you can take density bonuses and go up to 10 stories or something to hit the FAA limit at, you know, five, six, seven.
Yeah, so we did look into that and based on our examination of the ballot measure, the ballot measure had the different character areas of the transit corridor plan shown in a map and it had different heights in them. So the El Camino area that's in the TOD2 and the civic center zone had, both had 70 feet. The CBD, I believe, was at 55. We can pull up that exhibit. I don't have it on hand, but we can pull it up to share it with the planning commission.
I mean, at 12 feet per story, that's still, I mean, that's five and a half, something, exactly what you're.
I mean, everything in the TOD plan area does allow over three stories.
Right. My recollection was that we had some five and some four.
Yes.
I've forgotten the details now.
So we're looking at the map. Measure N had the central business district, this CBD zone, which is basically downtown at 55 feet and four stories. You could get all residential building. You could get five stories in that. But I think because the original text of the CBD had no allowance of residential on the ground floor, it assumed the ground floor was going to be reached out with a taller plate. Now, having said that, using density bonus, they can have a five-story building in the central business district if they meet our affordable housing requirements.
So is it the original ballot measure had the 55 foot?
Yes.
Okay. All right. My, yeah, my impression had been that that was, all right, okay. Um, yeah, that was the one thing I wanted to go over again. So if we're opening up a zoning ordinance, you might as well at least discuss it. I don't think I have anything else. We've
Yeah. Before the cannabis part, I only have one question. I suspect in seven. One. B. And that is site architectural landscaping offers. And so there's this additional thing, any additional ground cover shrubs or trees. Why was this added as part of the report review?
So from all the changes to this subsection, so subsection 12, 108, 015, B1B are all changed just to, just to clarify, as far as staff's concerned, the removal of ground cover shrubs or trees is already encapsulated under landscaping alterations.
In somewhere else than under that?
In that section, at the beginning of that section, you see it says site architectural or landscape. But some have argued, no, it's not. And so we're just putting it in to be clear. No, that is a landscape alteration that has to go through the process. That doesn't mean you can't alter it and you can't change it, but for the most part, if there is changes to landscaping, we just want to make sure it's drought tolerant. We want to make sure if something's taken out, something is put in. That's really what the intent of what the review is going to look at.
So this is interesting. Yeah, really, I understand. There's no change. And if there's anything we would want to make a change, say, let's hurt that. That's a whole different topic.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. That's very good. Okay. That's the only question.
Do we have any comments? We move on to, do we have any comments on the cannabis issue? Is that right? I'm on the power. I've seen Alians accused. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Question. We have one public comment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, from Constantino. Yes, and you'll have three minutes from the time that you start.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, planning person. My name is Constantino. I'm that, we got on Sylvan. I introduce myself and say hello. My whole intention is to be you guys. My whole goal is to take that empty property and hopefully build some identity of some sorts for housing. I was a San Bruno resident for 13, 14 years. I own Doris Pizza, you know, and I'm pretty pissed off that there's no housing for my employees at the Hayward. I told I can build some housing for everybody. Actually, that's my intention. Just want to say hello. And hopefully this will be able, this will allow us hopefully in the ball rolling. And I've already spoke to Kelly already, so I'll present her to everyone and get ball rolling and not be a lot anymore hopefully. So hello.
Thank you. That is our only public comment.
There's not that a question like, do you know what the situation is with single stair reform, like allowing single stair big rise?
So unless, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing, that is, if you're a multi-story building instead of having to have two different stairways, you could just have one.
I mean, this is, this is the issue that came up in relation to a commercial building, where you don't play the, whereas, I mean, there's extensive evidence from Europe that, you know, at the sort of big rise with modern materials, single stair buildings are perfectly safe. There's like no evidence of increased fire risk.
Yeah, my understanding is absent the state changing the state building and fire codes. It, the cities can amend the state codes, but we have to tie it to a geographic issue. Like if one is in an area that has greater than average chance of fire, you might be stricter. Or if you're in an area that has absolutely no chance of fire, you might be less. I don't believe this is something we can do. I'm aware of the analysis and research and I concur. It would be probably a monumental benefit if that change were made. But at this point, really, I think the only way the smaller type projects sites can happen are if you kind of make it like a townhouse project.
Right, yeah.
Which you can't get as much.
For the type of project or as seen, commentary speaking of like it would, if we, unfortunate that we can't get ahead of the state on that. Maybe they'll change it for the next year or two and we can go along with that. Figured I'd ask.
I think there was a comment about the cannabis section.
Yeah. Okay, so the first one, I mean, I think we just go through each of the changes. First one was adding all the requirements, like the documentation requirements. Really just want to ask, you know, why, why is this being added here in this whole?
So Embarc requested a number of adjustments to the ordinance. There were some that we felt were minor. And the first batch where you see that under section 12, section D, currently, the regulations are no one under 21 is allowed to enter or be a customer. In the state, you are allowed by state law to have medicinal cannabis if you are at least 18 and have a doctor's prescription. Some cities make their regulations so if you're 18 with a prescription, you can go into a dispensary. This language change would allow that. And it lists what what they will, what they will do to ensure that that person has at least, has the right type of ID and and the prescription.
Okay, actually, I understand that part now. That answered one of my questions, the difference between the 21, 18, they seem to conflict in percentage about that. So but now that I, I am not understanding, so this permits you to enter the building if you're 21, or if you're 18, you have ID plus a prescription. That's how that works?
Yes, yeah. So under D1, it's saying the retailer can only sell adult-use cannabis goods to someone who's 21 or older. You still have to confirm the age, identity, identification and such. Number two says licensed retailer shall only sell medicinal to individuals at least 18 with, with the, with the prescription. Again, after confirming age and stuff. And then three says these are the types of identification that are accepted.
So it looks like we're just following the state law on this one.
We're aligning our regulations to state law. We don't have to, but we also don't see a reason not to in this case.
So if we're just aligning directly with the state law, why wouldn't we just like have a statement that says, just follow the state law? And that way, the state law happens to change in the future.
That is a good point. We could have done that. There are a lot of things in here that are duplications of state law. So maybe it was originally viewed as over documenting and such. If there's interest in taking that approach, we can look into that. But if there's support for this change and support for maybe simplifying it in that manner, we can bring that up with the city attorney's office between now and the council meeting.
I would prefer they were here and they must have had a reason sometimes. I mean, I also like, I actually, I agree with your position on this. I think the, to argue the other side would be, you know, some future legislature might say, oh, you can buy it when you're 18 or something, right? And like the city might not agree with that. And so it's like, it's a question of like, do you want to keep local control over this issue of how, you know, the statute like, and obviously if the state raises it again, that would override, it would be, our law would be invalid. We have to change it. But by having a higher law than some hypothetical future version, sort of, you know, give us protection. But I just, I shouldn't say the two, it seems so unlikely they would make a really extreme change like that. So I think simplifying would be reasonable.
Yeah, I can say at this point, like I, it just sounds like more work to change it. And so avoid the, yeah, for the little dollars. They'll change it in the future if things so I wouldn't necessarily the the last section on, so section 13, on the signage, this looks like it's adding the ability to put dispensary on the signage. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so currently, they're not, not allowing that.
Looks like my battery's dead. Yeah, so that, that's exactly what this change is doing. It's literally saying they can add that term. If you read the prior parts, it notes that signage is limited to identification only and shall not contain any logos or information that identifies, advertises, or lists the services for the products offered. And so the original read was, well, the word dispensary is advertising the products offered. Now, our, all of our rules for cannabis are 10 times stricter than any other business. And so any other business could have something and it could say, you know, a taco shop could say, you know, name of store and add
tacos for, you know.
Tacos, yeah. And that would be a problem. We made a rule back when we set these originally that you can't have anything that says what you are in any way. So all they can have under our current rule is embark. And that's it. This would allow them to say, to have a word, it has to be a little bit smaller, not in color, that just identifies, yeah, it's a dispenser.
And why are we changing it?
It's the request of the applicant because they believe that will help with their sales.
Yeah, I don't agree with this one. Talking amongst ourselves, I actually, so I, speaking from the community side, I believe they wanted to limit the dispensaries because it kind of against it. But also because they didn't want San Bruno to have that feel. I would say, you know, I was actually in support more, but more discreet as well. I think this kind of breaks my rule of being discreet. Everyone knows what a dispensary is. I like the idea that you might live next to one, but you didn't know you lived next to one unless you're looking it up on the phone. I don't know if I agree that it's going to hurt their sales or whatever. It's going to impact their sales that much. So, yeah, I'm actually more supportive of this addition at all. I would say more dispensaries, but just be discreet. That's what I'm supporting.
And so if if there's no other comments on it, and if you made a motion for just the cannabis part, you could move for the parts that you think are acceptable and the parts that aren't. And if there's a second and it's passed, then that would handle that.
Mr. Chair, so Peter, what is the reflection of state law?
On the signage issue?
Yeah.
On the signage issue, I believe we, we have the full authority to leave the rule the way it was. And I believe the original intent was, as Commissioner Kuhn has described that, the idea was you didn't want to know, you didn't want, the reason no logos, no information is kind of not knowing that what product is in there. And so this does go against that overall thought. The question I think for the commission is, is this a change? Literally, is this a change we should do? And if not, that could be part of the recommendation up to council. This was not a staff proposal. These particular ones were brought up by the business and we felt they were minor. But if the commission has a different view, that's perfectly fine.